And to the republic for which it stands, one nation that can have indivisible justice for all.
Would the clerk take the roll, please?
Mayor Bro.
Here.
District one more set.
Here.
Two O'Connell.
Here.
Radamacher is excused, four Wyland.
Here.
Five O'Malley.
Here.
And Cook is absent.
At this point in our agenda, we take comments and suggestions from citizens present for any item that is not on the agenda. Is there anyone that would like to address the council at this time? Anyone? I'd ask one more time. Seeing there's no one, we'll go to the consent agenda items, and Madam Clerk will verbalize those for us.
To approve the regular meeting minutes of February 21st, 2007, to approve claims for payment in the amount of $495,297.06, a detailed description is available in the Clerk's office for inspection. To approve the issuance of regular operators licenses for the period March 6th, 2007 through June 30th, 2008, a list of applicants is available in the Clerk's office on request. To approve the issuance of a temporary Class B retailers license to the Hudson Hockey Association to be used at their annual pool tournament event, April 26th, 2007 through April 29th, 2007, at the Hudson Sports and Civic Center, 1820 Hanley Road. To approve the appointment of Craig Ann Cooper as the liquor license agent for Coop Deuce Enterprises LLC doing business as Coops Pizza, 816 Carmichael Road. To place on file the community access board minutes of February 27th, 2007. That is all.
What is your pleasure on the consent, counsel?
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Morsette?
Yes.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Wyland?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Motion is carried. I'd like to divert a little bit, go down to whole business, the review of the ordinances concerning sexual offender residency restrictions. Mike O'Keefe.
Gina Jar.
Thank you for coming this evening.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to introduce Gina Jar. She's Assistant Regional Chief, also a sex offender specialist. We're here tonight to answer questions. She's going to give you, excuse me, a brief update on the statewide committee, and then we'll answer your questions.
I don't know if any of you have read the State Journal from yesterday. They actually had an article in there updating on the legislative committee. Basically, they're not ready at a point yet to either support or not support the issue of the sex offender ordinances. However, they did go on to make some initial recommendations, and I can go through those with you. They're going to meet again, it looks like, mid-March and look into this a little further. But the recommendations that they've given so far, they're recommending child safety zones, which would prohibit offenders who commit serious crimes against children from going places where children are likely to be. State rules already bar sex offenders from contact with anyone under 18. This provision would literally map out where each offender can and can't be. Second recommendation is stiffer registration requirements. Requires most sex offenders to register and provide a new photo in person every six months rather than annually by the mail. Offenders' public website listings also would include a risk assessment and description of any distinguishing marks on their bodies. Third, offender definitions spells out how the state will define high-risk sex offenders, possibly using the designation to trigger mandatory community notification. And then finally, they recommended new links directing the DOC to add links to the sex offender website, providing information on how to identify, prevent, and report suspected sex crimes.
And is it apparent to you that they may accept these recommendations in their March meeting, or is that a discussion of those?
My indication in here is that the panel did approve these proposals.
Okay.
And that the ordinance issue is what they're going to look at further in March. That's my understanding of the summary.
And they are going to talk about risk assessments, and that's kind of an open-ended thing, and that could take some time.
Yeah.
If there's sex zones, sexual zones in the community, you're going to automatically trigger that community alert? Is that what that's saying?
Not saying how they would implement it. I think there's a lot of things that have to be looked at yet.
But if we put our ordinance in place, that's a moot point with the city of Hudson. You would not have that action take place in the city of Hudson because you can't place them in Hudson, right?
If you would do that.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Questions? Go ahead.
Yes. Gina, a related question to the child safe zones. That seems to be the only part of the recommendations that has a local link. And would they be looking for the cities to come up with the child safe zones? That is, areas where children are expected to congregate? I mean, it's pretty easy to know, you know, playgrounds connected to schools and things, but there may be other youth centers or something like that. Do you know if they're going to be looking to the cities to supply that information?
That's one part that I don't know, and I had questions about that, too, how it would be implemented and how they would identify those. I'm assuming that they would need to get some help from local cities and townships to do that. But, you know, these are just initial proposed recommendations by the legislative committee. And then I suppose as time goes by, they have to look further into how they would do these things. It doesn't talk about it.
Something we've run into, you know, recently, we've got a sex offender that's residing at the Royal Inn, and he still can't find a place to live for a couple of reasons. Number one is they won't let, he goes to any landlord, and the first question is, will my address be on the website? And the answer's, of course, yes. So they declined to rent to him, and he's still paying the $2.50 a week, I think, at the Royal Inn. But the other thing we ran into that we really hadn't thought about was bus stops. And that's a place where children congregate, so we've really had to take a hard look at bus stops and kind of where that factors into where he's looking. And right now, we've looked at four or five places and x-ed them out just because of bus stops.
But at the same time, that certain individual, also, his prior conviction happened at a bowling alley, and you got him how close to the bowling alley in the Hudson? That doesn't make sense to me.
Well, it was best-case scenario, that's where we could put him. His conviction happened partially there. It happened at his home. It happened at a beach in Hudson. It kind of happened all over the place. But it was where children congregate. There's no doubt about that.
And again, I reiterate my point that if this ordinance was in place, he would not be placed in Hudson right now.
That's correct.
Well, the state's taking no position on those ordinances at this time, is it?
No, we're not.
One other question. You said where offenders are, not where they live, but where they are. Does that mean that there would be some sort of tracking of where these people are at any moment in time? Or how?
See, the problem is, is all we are looking at is a written summary of their proposals, and I don't think that they've thought a lot more into exactly how they're going to do those. So I have a lot of the same questions that you're asking about these proposals. We just don't know the specifics yet.
Because you're talking about GPS or that kind of tracking system, and the governor has pared that down considerably from where we were at before.
And I assume these people are the people who are on parole, not those that have served their time and are off the watch list.
Right. As of today, we had 10 people that are on probation or parole, registered sex offenders in the city of Hudson. We have 11 that are off probation and parole that pretty much move around freely without any kind of monitoring in the city. The 5401 zip code.
Mike, you may or may not know the answer to this, and I don't think Paul Larson is not here this evening, but every so often, I've checked in with the man who was our acting chief until just recently, Lieutenant Larson, and he has told me every time that none of the registered sex offenders in the city of Hudson have reoffended. Do you have any additional knowledge of that or anything that contradicts that?
No, that's correct.
Okay.
Right.
So in other words, these are upstanding citizens from this aspect?
They follow the rules. They follow the laws of the state and the city, and they haven't reoffended.
Thank you.
Also, with the ordinance, I'm looking to stop any more than 10 or 11 of these people.
Well, I think that we're way, it's way premature to talk about any ordinance at all at this point. The state has, what we agreed on at our September 5th meeting last year was that we would wait for indication from the state before we made any, took any action of our own, and we're still waiting for the indication from the state.
That was supposed to come in October. I want to either do this ordinance or not and take it off. And I think it's too important, and I'm ready to go forward with it once we have a full quorum.
Well, we have a quorum tonight.
A full quorum tonight. I will move that we cease discussion of sex offender ordinance.
I'll second that. I feel that we've, like Randy said, we wanted to wait. We've waited. This could take a year. They could go through this session into the next session. I feel Hudson has an excellent, has done an excellent job. We've had Lieutenant Larson here. We spoke with the representative from the county, and they've said we've done an excellent job. I just don't feel we need to change it.
I'd like to suggest to Mike and Gina that if any of the questions we asked this evening, if they were not part of your questions, to please submit them to the proper committee so that the next time we get together, and if we do, then we can hone in on those. Would that be okay?
Certainly.
Yes.
Any other comments?
I don't know if it's a point of parliamentary procedure, but either move this to be tabled that supersedes that motion?
No.
I have to check my little cheat sheet here.
Well, we have a motion and a second before us.
Yeah, I know, but I...
I understand. Counsel will give us a verdict here in a minute.
Sure.
Can I ask a question? From the legal perspective, from what's going on with the state right now, do you see any value one way or another to having a broader ordinance here? I mean, there is outstanding issues right now about cities that have put in an ordinance which is opposed to the, and are starting to have the legal ramifications of banishment. Are you seeing, you know, what's going on with other cities that have put in an ordinance?
As far as what is going on with the other cities that have put in the ordinances, I think they're fairly new. I mean, they've all been within the last six months. Algoma, I think Green Bay just did one. Was it Cudahy that was looking at one? Cross is looking at one. Some of them haven't even, you know, moved forward with an ordinance. I know that we haven't received any information as of yet. I think it's just a little too soon to tell. All of the information that we've received has been from other states that are a little farther along in the process, for example, Iowa. And I know we're seeing a lot of negative feedback from Iowa on imposing those ordinances.
If I may help you with that answer, here is a quote from the several people in Iowa. "Iowa is becoming an example of the unintended consequences of this measure. Prosecutors, police officials, and even victims' rights groups say the crackdown has backfired. The chief deputy of Polk County Sheriff's Department in Des Moines says these guys are now off the radar scope, and we've got no idea where they are. Iowa prosecutors agree. The statewide association earlier this year declared the law a failure and asked the legislature to pursue a different strategy to protect children from sex crimes." That children are in Iowa Coalition Against Sexual Assault, representing victims, echoed that request and said that Iowans are now actually less safe because sex offenders facing banishment are absconding in large numbers. And this is the issue, this is part of the issue here, is that we can pass whatever ordinance we want to, but we don't have the final say. The registered sex offender has the final say by dropping out of sight if we make life miserable for them here. They are abiding by the law here. We have no reason to persecute these people here. And if we do persecute them, we look like bullies, and if they feel pressured enough, they're just going to take the back door.
That's not my purpose, Scott. The purpose is to keep from any more sex offenders to moving into the city of Hudson.
That is exactly the point, Randy. They stop registering, and then you don't know where they are.
For every con, there's a pro article. You can look at all the information on the Internet you want.
This isn't off the Internet. Let me explain to you my rationale here. Because I used to be where you are. I'm not terribly proud to admit it, but my attitude for most of my adult life, Randy, concerning people who harm children, is that you just take them out behind the barn, and frankly, if you're the only person who comes back, that's really okay with me. But since last summer, when you introduced this ordinance, I've had to study it. Because Catherine's provided us with a lot of paperwork, all of which says, don't do such an ordinance, by the way, but I've had to study every piece of research I could get my hands on about this. And I have to say, I've done a complete 180 for several reasons. One is, as we've just discussed, we're trying to address a problem that doesn't exist. Our registered, the registered sex offenders who live here in Hudson are not offending. We have no record of them reoffending. Secondly, I think it's just a matter of time before these towns get sued, and why would I want to take, open a door, let's say, from our city treasury to a bunch of lawyers?
I'm certainly not in favor of that. Has it not stood up in district court?
Not in Wisconsin. Eighth Circuit Court of Appeals, which is a, the court governing the Minnesota district and other states. There's nothing in Wisconsin's circuit addressing sex.
So it has stood its constitutional value in the state of Minnesota?
In federal court, in the district that covers Minnesota and other states, yeah.
Okay. We had a motion and a second. We also had another motion which would supersede this one, according to counsel, but we haven't received a second on it.
The motion to table supersedes, but it needs a second.
Right. No second, so we go back to the original.
Yes.
If I, at the, given the prospect of being very long-winded about this, I do want to explain that this is thought out, that this is not an emotional thing with me or a spur of the moment that I've given a lot of thought to this. We would be placed in the position with such an ordinance of persecuting people who have already served their time and are now good members of the community, and unlike all of us here in this room, they are certified to be good members of the community, we would be persecuting people by picking the low-hanging fruit. These are people who are registered, who are living their lives, and I'm sure that when they were younger, they did not expect to live their lives as registered sex offenders. But that's the way it's turned out for them, so life isn't all that great for them in the first place. We would be making it worse for them, and their response could be, as it has been in Iowa, they can just drop out of the system. Right now, if we want to do some good, there are over 850 unregistered sex offenders in the state of Wisconsin, 520 of which are child sex offenders, and we don't know where they are at all. The people who are here, the 11 that are here, leave them alone, because otherwise, we are bullies picking on law-abiding people who have served their time and are now walking the straight and narrow. If you want to do some good, go find the 850 who aren't registered.
Well, we're still in discussion, and quite frankly, let's wait and see what that committee is going to do. Let's wait and see what the state's going to do, and then if we feel that there is some opening in there that isn't a fact or anything that's covered, we can always bring that back. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion's carried. Let's go down to new business, resolution number 5-07, authorizing the issuance and sale of $2,720,000 general obligation promissory note series 2007A, and Brian Riley will bring us up to date on that. Gina and Mike, thank you for coming. I really appreciate that. Sorry.
Good evening to all of you. My name is Brian Riley with Ellers. I'm sure you may have seen me here on a number of occasions with Sean. We took bids today for your $2,720,000 geo-promissory notes as background. This issue will finance a number of public works, parks, and street improvements, as well as purchase of a fire truck, or fire equipment as well. As I mentioned, we did take bids this morning. We got very good results. We got 13 bidders on the issue, which is quite a bit for what Hudson has experienced in just in general.
More than we've ever had.
Absolutely. I think last year, or not last year, but '05, we had eight bidders. That's certainly a good turnout. When you get into the double digits, you know you're attracting a lot of interest. In general, this is a short issue. It's 10 years. The block sizes, their maturity sizes are over $200,000, so I can imagine that most of the underwriters who bid on this, it's easy for them to sell this issue. You know, you can get out and get to one investor with one maturity, and they like that. It's less work for them, it's more money in their pocket. So bidders were pretty aggressive. I'll bring you down to the section on the front page that says range of bids. The bids ranged from 3.74 percent, we'll say, for the winning bid, out to 4.19 percent on the tail end. That was from Bremer Bank out of Menominee. They're not real active in the market. Actually, the next worst bid was probably more in general and in line with the market. The dollar difference between the best and the worst was about $74,000 to the good, and if you take, you throw out that final bid, it's still $23,000 to the good, to the benefit of the city. We kept the issue the same size after taking the bids. The discount or the money that the underwriter takes upfront for their risk in marketing the bonds was about more than half less than what we had budgeted, and also the issuance expenses came in a little less. But because these are notes, we have a fungible source of funds, so we've taken about $27,000, and that money is available as sale proceeds to be spent on projects over the course of the next year or two. So you have a little bit extra money to find a home for and spend those dollars on. The coupon interest, or the interest that you're going to pay over time, is about $100,000 less than we had projected. When we were here initially, I think our rates were about a quarter point over where the market was at. If you paid attention to last week or so, stock market has gone down, but so have rates pretty substantially. So we were conservative in our estimates, but you've also found the benefit of great planning on your end by being in the market at a very opportune time. So the coupons range from 3.55 percent, and our next year's maturity out to 3.7 percent, 10 years out. Take you on to the next couple pages here is the bid tabulation. You can see all of the bids that were received from the underwriters. The winning bidder was UMB Bank out of Kansas City, Missouri, who also happens to be the party who purchased your last issue. You can see that, you know, there really is not a huge range of bids there. The difference between UMB Bank and, we'll say, UBS as the second worst bid is about 13 basis points, which is, you know, a small amount, but it still corresponds to that $23,000 savings to you. Exhibit two, after the bid tabulation, is the final amortization schedule that you'll have. Shows the debt service that you'll pay over the life of the issue. You can see there's a slight lump there in 2009, but that's done because we're taking into account your existing debt service, so you'll have kind of a flat to declining mill rate over the next couple of years, barring any new debt over this time. The very bottom portion there just gives you our projected and final numbers. As you can see, we're, you know, we're about 70 basis points to the good on the true interest cost, so that translates into about $113,000, $114,000 from our projections to where the final, final numbers shook out. So we were very pleased to see that. The next couple pages is the Moody's credit report. They reaffirmed the city's A1 rating in 2005. You were upgraded from A2 to A1. You know, you had very substantial growth, very healthy financial position. I think the things that they cited in this most recent credit report was that, you know, growth is moderating, but that's in general across all markets. Real estate is a little soft. Your wealth levels, as far as the city goes, are higher than state averages and are very well incomparable to, say, the metro area of St. Paul. You have healthy general fund reserves at about 30 percent of your expenditures. You have a formal fund balance policy that says you'll keep that 22 to 27 percent, but we think that number where you're at right now is a good position for you to be in, and it helps you keep that A1 rating, and maybe even then, over the next couple of years, move up into the next level. They also say, you know, obviously, you guys have low debt levels. The last issue, we paid off a bunch of debt. With this issue, we're retiring. We're extending a balloon payment on an old issue so that that can be paid off within this 10-year timeframe, but the portion that is allocable to tax increment, District Number Four, is being paid off in full. So that money goes to pay that off, and that debt goes away. So you have low debt levels, and you're paying off all of your debt within the next 10 years, the debt that's outstanding right now, which is, I won't say rare, but the average is about 50 percent paid off in 10 years across the US in municipal issuers. So you're paying off all your debt in good order, and you don't have much debt to start with. So those are all the things that they cited as the positives in their credit report. The last page here is really just illustration to kind of show you where we are in the interest rate cycle. The indexes that we follow bottom out in December as actually 35-year lows, so generational lows, so this is really a great time to be in the market and doing long-term fixed-rate debt. So you have a resolution before you that was prepared by Corals and Brady, the bond counsel, and given that you're getting financing at about 3.74 percent for 10 years, which is probably in most instances about three-quarters of a point above inflation, our recommendation would be for you to approve the resolution and to lock into the terms that are presented before you.
I wanted to re-stress to the council, and also to our TV audience, the A1 rating, which there's not a lot of cities that have that. Quite frankly, it's because you've done a good job, and our staff has done a good job. And Ellers has guided us through the last few years with a lot of involvement, and we appreciate that. And so with that, we have resolution number 5-07, authorizing the issuance and sale of $2,720,000 in general obligation promissory notes, series 2007A. We have to...
Move to suspend the rules.
Move to suspend the rules.
I'll also caveat that under the statutes, the voting requirements, I think, you have a quorum here.
Yes, we do.
We, everybody, it needs to be unanimous at this point, because the city requirements are that you have majority vote, even without all the members present.
Is there a second on suspension?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion's carried.
Move to approve ordinance 5-07.
Resolution.
Excuse me, the resolution.
Resolution, yeah.
Sorry.
Second. Any discussion?
I just want to mention one thing that I'm not sure that came out in the last paper, was that this is retiring a significant portion of debt as well as adding a new portion of debt. So it's not like we're going out for $2.7 million worth of new money.
You mentioned that.
Yeah. So I just wanted to reiterate that.
Any other questions or discussion? If not all in favor?
Aye.
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 Close. Motion's carried. We might as well keep right on going with the new business. Sign, okay. Where is it? Right here? Let's go to be under new business. Consider participating in the March 15th Roundtable Discussion with Barnness Consulting Services regarding the possible future uses for the St. Croix County Government Center property. When we attend this particular meeting, and you're all invited, I think you were at the last meeting.
Yes, I was.
As well as I. Oh, great. I didn't know that. The position I've taken, and I've mentioned this to the council before, is if we participate in any purchase of the government land, I've had meetings with some of the staff, I've had meetings with also the fire department and the police department. To purchase the needs for a safety building, which might include both fire department and police department, would cost us about $1,005,000. Now, in contrast to that, we do have seven and a half acres that the city has set aside next to the business park, which could be used for any buildings that we might want to build out there. So unless the council has some different directions or directions that they should give myself, Denny, or staff, I think that it might be a lot easier to, if we consider building a safety building, that we build it out on that particular property rather than spending a million and a half to purchase some of the government center property. Now, that's just my opinion. I'm telling you that. I'd like to get some feedback from you and what you think, but with the meetings that we've had to date, I don't want to start building buildings all over the place, and suddenly, the buildings that we have are now empty, i.e. the library building, I'll call it, and the safety building across. And there's a lot of possibilities that could happen. For instance, the library might move out of that particular building, and we could move the police department in there. To add on another couple of bays to the safety building across the street would cost us maybe $1 million, but to do that out by the government center might cost us anywhere from $3.5 to $5 million. So that's the kind of the position that I've taken verbally, and I'd like to get some input from you. from you before that meeting on anything that you may want to add to that.
I'd like to make a motion in just a second with a comment ahead of time.
Yeah.
I question the wisdom of us, the city, doing a 10-minute presentation as to what we would do with that land. I don't think that's really necessary at this time. But I would like to move that the council approve, authorize the mayor and city administrator and other staffers as they see fit. I'm sure that would include Denny and probably David.
Sure.
As well as council members to attend this meeting, to hear what they have to say, which is what they want to do. I don't know about us making a presentation as to what we would do with the land because we might not do anything with the land.
Exactly.
That's my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. We're a long ways from even considering that we either purchase out there or take the other direction. So I think that, actually, I think the proposal should be coming from the county regarding what piece of property is available, the price of that particular piece of property, how it would involve our taxes now and in the future. So I think that there's going to be a lot of negotiation, quite frankly, before that decision is made. And as far as the county is concerned, this is probably the worst time for them to have some developer pick up some land to develop because there's a lot of it available right now. I was just going to say, I don't think they're at that point themselves.
That's what Randy and I heard, that this is a long ways away from being put up for sale.
That's why I didn't attend because I figured the proposal should be coming from them to us, not from us to them.
I agree.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Motion's carried. Thank you very much. Outdoor Recreation Aids for Prospect Park Project, resolution number 6-07. Paul Roddermaker put this together and was asking for aids, and it's resolution number 6-07. You want to have the first reading?
No, let's just go. I want to move to suspend the rules.
Okay, good. All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Motion's carried.
Move to adopt resolution 6-07.
Second.
Can... I think this is a good move, and I think it'll certainly help us. We spent a million dollars on that particular purchase. This will help us considerably, and once we get those aids and identify what we're going to do with it, it'll help us and the taxpayers move to the next step. So my clarification on this, is this just to attain funding source and then design the project for that old site, or what is this for? I think it's asking for you to okay the resolution so that we can go after both of those.
Okay.
Finding and asking for money.
And this is the preliminary work with the work we had talked about originally, purchasing the property and going to the DNR for assistance.
We had this in mind when Lee and I were negotiating with the landowner to get as much as possible of our city money back.
Right.
Yeah, so we're picking up the ball and...
This is not for a new project, for anything new to be built. This is getting back money for what we've already purchased.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Close? Motion's carried. Well, I don't know if we're ready for that. Denny's got to give me a signal when he's ready for that. Let's go to unfinished business. Information regarding the increasing number of liquor licenses that could be allowed in the city, ordinance number 3-07. I'll get to you guys. Are all your people here, including your engineer? Who is missing, Denny?
Roger, how are you?
Well, that's why we're holding you up on that, okay? I saw some questioning faces out there, and it's not that I don't like you, I'm just hoping that everybody's here.
I appreciate that, Roger.
Right. Okay, ordinance number 3-07. Is this just still discussion, first reading, or...
Yeah, well, my memo explained it. Yeah, it's information. You can, I mean, it's on the agenda, the ordinance is identified. If you wanted to do first reading, you can. You can discuss it because it's mostly just responding to your direction and offering some options, but in the form of an ordinance. There's three things that we're trying to take care of. Trying to place or approve applications in areas of the city that are growing rather than in areas that have, already have a lot of liquor license businesses. That's, you know, relates to the atmosphere of the neighborhood. Last time, the council had talked about districting. My opinion is that establishing these criteria gives the council more flexibility, but also the authority and basis for rejecting an application if it's in an area that the council feels already has plenty of licenses.
The council would like to study this and bring it back. Certainly do that, and I think it's important enough to have a full council to consider the large change that we would be considering.
Well, I will move for first reading so that we can get another chance at it later on, and I do have some discussion of a possible change.
Down there's some changes in there.
I'll sign in that.
We got a second?
So if we will vote on okay in the first reading...
All in favor?
Aye.
Catherine, if you would, I'd like you to consider the sixth whereas on page two, page one of the actual ordinance, which reads, whereas the common council further finds that the need for new alcohol beverage licenses is primarily for businesses locating in newly developing commercial areas of the city. That's what you have, and of course, you know that I'm interested in things outside the B3 business district. But rather than write in, you know, areas of the city outside of the B3 business district, which is, you are correct, does, that very clearly delineates things and is rather rigid. We could go through another ordinance change later on, but I don't think we have to do that. Keeping in mind that we are going to be talking about something that may be developed in the B3 business district in just a few minutes that would need, I would assume, would need a liquor license, I would like us, when we come back to this again, to remove the word "primarily" from that sentence. So it will then read, the need for new alcohol beverage licenses is for businesses locating in newly developing commercial areas of the city, because the Old River City Center would then be a newly developing area.
With that wide open, we could make decisions accordingly.
Exactly. But if somebody says that they want to put in a bar where the sub shop is on Second Street, no, that's not a newly developing area.
I agree. Okay, we voted on that, right?
Any direction on the quota?
Yeah.
I mean, do you want to discuss that or wait for the next ordinance?
Let's bring it up at the next meeting when everybody's here. And we will ask them in a memorandum to include any changes that they have in mind for the next time we bring this up. Is that okay? And I think we should have a full council for something.
And we should have some logic behind whatever number we choose.
Sure.
I'd like to see that.
Oh, why start now?
Well, that goes without saying.
Well, it does and it doesn't. I mean, it has to be supportable.
Let's take up B, and this one, maybe we need the full council too. Unfinished Business B, consider revisions to the city's banner policy, resolution number 7-07. And Paul Roddermaker did have a suggestion if we considered that, and that was to, no banners will be allowed between November 15th and January 15th. And what is your pleasure on that consideration?
Did Paul give a rationale for that? November 15th?
Well, I think he was in concert with Jim, our...
Holiday decorations.
Holiday decorations and...
I see, obscuring the banner anyway.
And the banner actually would obstruct and detract from the Christmas decorations.
Yeah, I can understand.
So I think that makes sense.
There was a memo this evening that you should have received, and I know Jan emailed today, she did not get it in the packet, but it's on the table. You probably all have that already.
It might make sense to discuss it after you've had a chance to read that.
I think so.
Because it's pretty lengthy and it's explaining the banner policy.
No, there's a two, three, other one.
One is the banner policy, another one is a, you know, opinion and position.
The one with the letter.
IR attorney.
Oh, okay.
It should have been in your packet, but was not.
Somebody want to suggest we hold that over?
I would move that we hold this over until the next council meeting.
Second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Close? Carry. Now, let's go, consider the extension of the moratorium on downtown development, ordinance number 2-07. Denny's going to give us the rationale on that and an update.
The original moratorium was approved for 128 periods. We're closing in on that in a period of time, Gary, quickly.
Unfortunately, the plan commission is not being able to finish their recommendations, which will be forwarded to the common council and potentially considerations for ordinance modifications. It's not with the lack of effort by the plan commission. I think we've met something like seven or eight times, almost on a weekly basis since January 1st. There is a letter that was laid on your tables tonight from GCI Builders and Mr. Al Keller. I think John Anthonyson from Rep. James GCI Builders is here. Perhaps he can comment on that particular letter. Does require an ordinance change. Did conference or confer with Kathy in regards to the language of the proposed ordinance to extend, to include an exemption on very small projects, which could, those projects could be forwarded to the Plan Commission, Common Council for consideration. Again, it's, those types of projects should have a minimum impact, but we do have a couple of projects that have come up since the moratorium has been adopted initially, and there's some concern where those projects move ahead. So I think this exception could address those specific projects. I don't know if you want to discuss the merits of the moratorium or not, but certainly GCI Builders and, I don't know if Mr. Pat Smith, the owner of River City Center, apparently he's not here tonight, but I know they both had concerns on the extension of the moratorium.
I am concerned about extending it, but at the same time, you can explain that if the guidelines are accelerated, the moratorium could be lifted.
Yeah, yeah, we do, well, my intent, even intent with the original adoption of moratorium was 100 or 120 days. You know, if we could have got the guidelines and comfort level of the planning commission, you know, that moratorium could have been lifted at any time. This would also be true. At least my intention would be is, you know, this Thursday, we're meeting the planning commission again, hopefully to initiate the efforts to finalize the guidelines, where it could be done Thursday or not. I, you know, I can't promise, you know, I can't, I'm not a, I don't have a crystal ball to say what specifically is going to occur, but it still is our intentions to try to get through this as quickly as possible and to get this moratorium lifted. It's not my preference to have the moratorium in place, but, you know, we really need to continue the efforts and I guess, I mean, otherwise the moratorium would have gone to side and we wouldn't have had a consideration. So I asked for it to be put on the agenda so the council could consider it.
Via the TV, well, I watched that meeting on Tuesday from my home, and I was concerned that the owner had said that he has a possible leasing, and I don't know what or who or why or, you know, but I don't want to see something...
I guess that's a possibility from the day we adopted the moratorium might occur. I did receive an email from Mr. Smith saying, well, it was an email from a realtor advising Mr. Smith that there is a thrift shop that's interested in a lease. That's, was the extent of the memo, didn't specifically name a business. That was, is a fairly generic email that was forwarded, Mr. Smith.
Well, as chairman of the planning commission, this has not been an easy assignment. We want to make sure that we're in agreement with the developers. We want to make sure that the positions that we take are adequate to protect that lakefront area. I think the involvements with the developer have been very good. I think we're down to probably the last strokes as it relates to coming to a finite agreement. And most importantly, to make sure that the buildings that we create are not going to be a monstrosity, and I think we're very close to doing that. But the deadline date on that first moratorium is March 10th. And so we may not use this entire extension of the moratorium, but we do need some additional time to make sure that we can finalize this. And we're working feverishly to do that, and we've had a lot of involvements by the developer, and I don't know if you wanted to, John, read that letter or not, but...
As long as you guys all got it.
Yeah.
I gave it early and Randy and Don said that everybody got it early, so I think everybody got a chance. That was an important part.
And I think that indicates your willingness to keep working with us, because I think it's important for you and for us that we build something down there that's going to be attractive, it's going to help to develop some business, and most importantly, to the satisfaction of all of our constituents. We've got a lot to protect on there. Might take a little longer to do it, but I think it's important enough to do it.
May I just make one more comment, please?
Sure.
The ingredients or the elements that Mr. Keller provided in his letter basically is a pledge of cooperation to the city of what we're trying to move towards. There may be one other possibility of addressing a consideration, and that would be possibly after Thursday, so we can reassess where we're at, is if in a contractual form, those pledges might be moved into a contractual form or not. Catherine, I haven't talked about this a lot, and she's, she's kind of raising her eyebrows. But I'm not saying that has to be done. I'm not saying it will be done. I'm just saying that's a possibility of maybe the city exploring a consideration. So that, maybe that might give some comfort level in regards to moratorium also.
Sure. And it may not be all those factors under a contract, but it might be a modification of those, right?
Well, you're talking about adapting the moratorium, but at some point maybe coming to a development agreement during that. Yeah, I think you want your moratorium in place.
No, I agree, but that, but the development agreement or something might alleviate the concerns of continuing the moratorium.
We're open for...
Move to suspend the rules.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Motion's carried.
Move to adopt ordinance number 2-07.
Second.
Discussion. Any questions, any comments?
Would like to make a comment that, in agreement with you, Mr. Mayor, the, I've attended just about all of the planning commission meetings. Mark Putman and his company have done a tremendous amount of work producing the largest and best book about downtown Hudson I've ever seen, and which I'm reading now. And I believe that, as you mentioned earlier, you know, the painting is almost complete. We are nearing the final brush strokes. This would be a terrible time to stop and just let it all fall.
Say that so eloquently.
Thank you. I don't expect this to take another 60 days. And as soon as we are finished with the process, we're finished with it.
Absolutely.
Does anybody do this kind of week by week?
Well, we don't meet week by week, so that would be a problem.
We'll be doing that unofficially, John. I mean, the moratorium will be placed, but our desire is to get this thing done long before that, if possible, okay? And, you know, tell Al to hang in there.
Well, Al's not the one I'm worried about.
Me either. It's a guy named Pat.
He's, he's, he's a, he's part of this, but he's not, you know, the one that's going to drive this whole thing home.
Well, we understand that he's got a very real concern. He's losing X, I know what the number is, but let's not say it. He's losing a substantial amount of money every month in not having that, or in having that building vacant, or having that center vacant. We understand that, however, we are holding out a pretty big carrot for him here, that we are almost to the completion of creating, and I think that he would be wise enough to know that he better sit it out for a few more weeks.
And Scott, if it's done right, it'll be carrot for both of us.
Well, absolutely.
Well, the other people that are kind of involved, one we really brought up is the liquor store, Copycat, and some of the other businesses that are in there, and I wondered... I wonder, tell them what they're gonna do. And I think they were ready to come to that. Do we plan for a year, two years, where, where do we go? And we've had some discussions with them. But I guess, yeah, we're gonna move this...
We'll work on it together, make sure we get it done. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you for coming. Appreciate the attire there, John. Let's go to plant commission certified survey, survey map for four commercial lots north of Stage Line Road and east of Highway thirty-five, Demay Properties. I guess we're all ready to take that up.
The recommendation by the planning commission is to recommend approval of the certified survey map. I can regress just a second, really, they got a phone call a couple of weeks ago, a friend of mine asking us if we would consider looking at this certified survey map again, because the cinema would like to try to proceed moving ahead with their proposed development on the Demay property. And that was discussed, and the recommendation from the committee is, recommends approval of certified survey map for the CSM as proposed by Demay Properties for four commercial lots north of Stage Line Road and east of State Trunk Highway thirty-five with the following conditions. The first provision is not necessary, there is a, we modified the subdivision ordinance in nineteen ninety-seven, which gives an exemption on lots having the forefront of public street. So that provision granting of variance can be set aside. The roadway intersection utility plans proposed must be designed to meet city standards, have plans and specification be approved by the city engineer and water utility director. And the provisions of those intersection utility plans should be identified in a development agreement. Ten-foot utility and drainage units should be provided along the perimeter lots. The revised CSM you received has, has made those particular changes. The city should take over the jurisdictional maintenance of roadway areas on the south side of the Demay properties, property, including the intersection of Old Highway thirty-five and Stage Line Road, and the area of Stage Line Road from the east side of the I-ninety-four bridge to the interchange of Stage Line Road and Old Highway thirty-five. The city attorney review an issue and an opinion regarding the location of utilities and easements in the town of Hudson and dedicated the city to serve developments within the city of Hudson. And Catherine and I have talked about that, I'll allow her to give you her opinion on that particular issue.
Well, in talking with Denny, my understanding is there's other situations in the city where this has been done, and what we do is have an agreement whereby the owner of the road, which is Demay, gives an easement to the city for utilities and complete access to that area to service and maintain and construct any necessary utilities and to dig up the road if necessary at no cost and so forth. If and when I should say that the road is dedicated, obviously, then that would become, if that ever happens, that would become a, a city road, but at this point, it's not in the city, and the utilities would be outside the city, but it can be accomplished through an easement agreement.
Tom, did you want to add anything to present us with?
Thanks, Mayor, and thanks for kind of rearranging the schedule so it worked for us. I guess I'm happy to answer any questions that the, the council may have. I, I think folks are familiar with this property. I talked to Catherine earlier today about the fact that the, the easements and to encompass these things in the development agreement, we would do that and prepare that. And I don't know if you mentioned that, in addition to having that easement there in the roadway, we'd have a situation where nobody in the township could hook on to that either. But I guess that's obvious, that that would be the case.
Right.
The, I'd just point out, when we were at the, the Town of Hudson meeting early in, in February, there was some discussion about the jurisdictional issues, and I think that I had some discussions with Denny as well, that I think right now, actually, the city is actually plowing that section of road there as it is, and maybe have done a little minor maintenance on the shoulder of that. And it, it probably just makes more sense from that standpoint that you come up to the intersection, turn around and come back, as opposed to stopping at the edge of the bridge and trying to turn around at that, that particular point. But, and so, the, the town seemed to be okay with that, with that part of it, and so I think that that, that's a workable situation. And other than that, I went through at the planning commission the various issues that we had looked at with respect to the access to this property, and I can go through that now if people have more questions about that, or, you know, if, if people were able to see that on the, on the TV for the planning commission. I don't need to reiterate for you here. Okay.
Does the council have any questions?
Yeah, I'd be happy to answer questions if they do.
Move to approve the revised CSM that Denny handed us just before the beginning of the meeting, which takes care of the ten-foot utility question. Move to approve the revised CSM with the conditions that Denny has just enumerated for us.
There was one additional condition, and this will go in the developers' agreement, that a disclosure be provided to buyers that the property, the lots are served by a private road, not a public road. The city of Hudson has no obligation. And there will probably be a maintenance agreement that they will prepare and record outlining how that road will be maintained.
And that is incorporated in my motion by reference.
Is that a second? Any, okay. Further discussion or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you very much, that will allow some development out there, and the first one will be the new theater, right? Thank you. Ones we like too. Thank you all. I think we've done everything on the first page. Communications and recommendations of the mayor. I'd like to have a special meeting to have, number one, have our new chief of police introduce himself to us, only with that one item on the agenda, so that we can learn of his abilities, his background, his future plans, and quite frankly, to also approve some changes that he wants to make regarding lieutenants, sergeants, and that sort of thing, which was proposed by the acting chief before, but I didn't want that to be passed by this council until the new chief was in his position. He appreciates that very much, and I think it would be nice if we could have a little formal, informal meeting with him so that we get to know him better and to understand his philosophy as a chief, and maybe ask him a few questions. And so, rather than have him appear at a regular meeting with all of the agendas that we have, it may feel, he may feel a little uncomfortable, we may also. And I don't think it, Jan's gonna be contacting you all to see what a compatible date might be. It's spring break now, so we cannot do it this particular week, but maybe the following week, if everybody is here and willing to, think that's a good idea, or?
Yes, yeah.
You know, most of us would like to get to know him better, and that might be the first opportunity to do such.
Absolutely.
Let me tell you, to date, he's only been here for what, a week?
Two days.
Two days. I'm really impressed. I mean, this guy is unbelievable. It's just, he's gonna be such an addition to our, our force. I was kind of kidding him, I said the last chief lasted two weeks. Only one week after he interviewed with me, and he said, I promise I'll, I'll stay longer than that.
Well, luckily, this police chief has lived here for a number of years already.
He understands quite a bit, he really does. And he's the kind of guy that likes to communicate with the mayor, and with the staff, and with all of you. He wants to get to know you, wants to understand exactly what your needs are and what you'd like to see done. And it's, it's a communication that he likes both ways. So I think we're just super fortunate, we have an individual like that. So with that, I'll have Jan set up something, and we'll have that kind of a meeting. Communications items for future agendas without discussion, any alter person? City attorney? City administrator is leaving us when, on the fifteenth? I better clarify that, huh? He's taking, he's taking, he's taking a trip to New Zealand.
All right.
Not as the administrator.
But I had arranged an appointment with, to meet the mayor and, they call him chief of, down there.
Wellington?
Dunedin, New Zealand. Community about a hundred thousand people on the South Island, so...
You gonna take a little letter from us to, you know, give him a badge or something?
I've already, it's very near the hotel where we'll be staying, so I will make that trip just to... Might as well.
Well, thank you very much for mentioning that city, because the way it is spelled, I've always thought it was Dunedin.
It is actually the Scottish way to say Edinburgh.
Okay.
That's what they're promoting.
Been doing a little Googling here.
Okay.
And we will be, I'll be part of, also be down there hopefully assisting to bring the tournament back here in two years.
Now, you understand, the Lord of the Rings set is still intact down there. You, you can visit the, the Shire from Lord of the Rings there.
And if you don't get it, I'm going down there.
Move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. I guess Randy is getting nervous about, nervous about, oh my...
I can't go.
Yeah.
Talk about what a great time he's gonna have.